Bedford, April 2nd, 2025. The procedure here is that our secretary will call, will read an application. If it's your application, could you please come up to the podium here and introduce yourself and tell us what it is you want to do? We, all of us have had the opportunity to come out and see your project or what it is we want to do, what you want to do at your location. And this is a public hearing, so people, I will ask at some point whether people are in the room or on Zoom that want to talk about the project or ask questions about the project. And if not, then we will probably close the public hearing and we will try to reach a determination after we've had discussion amongst ourselves or asked you questions as to your application. With that said, let us begin with our 550 Guard Hill Road.
Sherman Farm, New York LLC, 550 Guard Hill Road, Bedford, Section Block &amp; Lot 73.17-16, Residential Quarter Acre Zoning District. The applicant is seeking a one-year time extension of a variance granted on 5224 Resolution 0424-3, granting a variance to permit the construction of an in-ground swimming pool, which results in 6.06% of building coverage, where the existing building coverage is 5.86% and where a maximum of 3% building coverage is permitted and where the impervious surface coverage results in 13.18%, where the existing impervious coverage is 13.17% and where a maximum of 8% impervious coverage is permitted in the Residential Quarter Acre Zoning District, Article 5, Section 125-50.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Hallie Pedicano. It's a pleasure to meet you all. I'm a new associate at Cuddy &amp; Fader, representing Sherman Farms, New York LLC. You may remember my colleague, Mel Alexander, who was here before you last year. The premises is 550 Guard Hill Road. As you mentioned, it is a home, both a home and a farm operation within Westchester County's Agricultural District. We were, and as you mentioned, that you have done site visits. You can sort of remember it was a little on driveway and then there's the home and then there's the farm operation, horse boarding operation next to it. We were approved a year ago for an area variance for a pool project, an in-ground pool project, which incorporated various mathematical calculations in regard to coverage. Due to the horse boarding operation, in addition to life, we have been unable to give the project the full tension that we wanted to and are here today requesting a one-year extension on the first condition.
One year?
Yes. I welcome any questions.
I don't have any problem with that.
I don't have any problem.
No problem? All those in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
Thank you.
No. What's that?
Roll call. You need to do a roll call.
Mr. Stern?
Wait, wait, wait.
Public?
Move, hold on. Close the public hearing?
There is no public.
There is no public hearing, yeah.
Okay. Do we have to though ask that we approve the extension of the variance as noticed?
We can approve it as noticed.
Okay. Now we can do a roll call.
Okay. And I'm assuming we're doing this for one year to expire in May of 2026?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Mr. McCallus?
Yes. Now you got it.
Don't do it in the winter.
536 Bedford Road LLC, 332 Adams Street, Bedford Hills, Section Block &amp; Lot 60.11-3-4, Light Industrial Zoning District. The applicant is seeking a variance for a total of three installed signs where two signs are permitted in the Light Industrial Zoning District. Sign 1A and 1B, flat wall signs, 97.5 square feet each, with 36-inch lettering, where a maximum letter height of 12 inches is permitted if affixed less than 100 feet from the center line of the nearest road. And Sign 2, 4.8 square feet with 12 inches lettering, is affixed to a canopy where a sign is not permitted on a canopy in the Light Industrial Zoning District. And where the total area of all signs on the lot is 199.8 square feet, where the total area of signs on the lot shall not exceed 1.5 square feet for each horizontal linear foot of the facade or 97.5 square feet in the Light Industrial Zoning District, Article 11, Section 125-120A and B1 and 125-122H.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Olivera. I'm a representative of Westchester Metals. We were here last month in front of the board. We took your comments into consideration. We have revised our drawings and we reduced the WMW letter size to two-foot tall letters, 24 inches high, and we matched the radius of the roof with it to some, to match the, our symbol of our company logo. And we also revised Sign 2 to eliminate the WMW above the canopy.
Great. I went by hoping to see it tonight, but it's not there yet.
It's going to take us a couple of weeks to modify it.
No, it looks beautiful on paper.
Thank you.
Can you just remind the public where we started with the site, the largest lettering on there? Because I know you've done some reduction here.
Correct. So originally, we had a sign, well, the sign is currently up at, with three-foot letters, 36-inch. And we took the comments of the board into consideration of a max of 24-inch that you guys would be okay with, and we revised our drawings accordingly. And within the next couple of weeks, we will modify the signage to match the drawings if approved today.
Thank you.
Question, when I did drive by, there, there's a sort of a whiteboard sign that's closer to the road. Is that just temporary?
Those were temporary until we put our permanent signs. Those are getting removed.
Got you. Is there anyone in the, in the audience that wants to speak on this application? Or on the Zoom call? Hearing, no one? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any questions?
Nope. I appreciate the applicant taking our comments into consideration. We think it's a little bit more balanced as far as the way we deal with signage in the town overall. So I certainly appreciate those modifications that the applicant has made to make it more conforming. And I have no issues with the proposed revisions that he's made to the plans.
Guys, anything?
I concur.
You want to make that motion then? Just turn that into a motion?
I would move to approve the application as noticed. The applicant is seeking a variance and the benefits sought to them cannot be achieved by another means feasible to the applicant. And in fact, the applicant took into account the board's comments and concerns when they, based on the original submission, and made changes to bring it more in conformance with what the community, the board thought would be more in kind with the community at large. There will not be an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. There are other buildings in the area that have three signs on them. The signs here all make sense for orienteering and for identifying the site itself and make contact, makes sense within the context of the building and the street and neighboring buildings. The variance requested is, you could argue, is substantial, but generally, when we look at it, that is not the only thing that we look at. The variance requested will not result in an adverse physical or environmental effect in the neighborhood or community. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but again, that's not the only one of the factors to be considered by the board in making its decision and is not determinative. Approval of the proposed variance is subject to the following conditions. Do they need to get a new sign permit? Or do they have one pending with this? What is that?
They have, they have supplied.
Yeah, just getting revised. They gave it revised.
Okay.
Need new plans.
Are, is there also a building permit with that or is it just a sign permit?
They get a sign permit, but we'll need the new plans that they approve.
I think we did a building permit for the other structure.
There's a building permit for the.
For the canopy.
Yeah, canopy.
Okay. So that's different, okay. So here, the applicant will submit, or guess these, these plans, the building, we don't need to have these certified after, right? Because now we're going to, normally, we have certified plans, but that doesn't make sense here for the signage. Okay. Yeah. So the, right, so there's none of that. So the applicant, though, will remove the existing non-compliant sign, replace it so that the new signage is in conformance with the pending sign application and permit, which the building department will then grant once where approve of the, if the variance is so approved. And the variance will be approved in conformance with plans last revised 311, 2025, consisting of drawings EO 1A, EO 1, and EO 2. That's it?
I'll second that.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Mr. McCallus?
Yes. You got it.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much for making the adjustment in the plan, and we're happy to have your business. Fantastic business in Bedford Hills.
Neil Watson and Judy Blundell, 10 the Terrace Catona, Section Block &amp; Lot 49.19-2-6, Residential Quarter Acre Zoning District. The applicants are seeking a variance to permit an already-installed generator that resulted in 45.1% of building coverage, where a variance was granted on October 10th, 2024, Resolution 10-242, for 41.06% of building coverage and where a maximum of 20% of building coverage is permitted in the R Quarter Acre Zoning District, Article 5, Section 125-50.
Evening. I'm Neil Watson.
Hi, I'm Judy Blundell. Hi.
Thank you for seeing us again. We know a lot more now than we did when we started. So basically, it gets down to when we measured the footprint of the house, there is an overhang, which we were led to believe, not by you, but that it was not part of the footprint because it was a cantilevered out.
Okay.
And so that was probably the major part of our mis-measuring, but it was, because it's a good-sized piece of building. So that is why it's over.
Okay.
Since we did that, Rob Johnson did a complete survey. We now have a very up-to-date and thorough survey of the property. As you can see, it's a small property. So that's really where we are. The generator is in, and that fits within, you know, within the original perspective.
Okay.
So other than that, it's, it's really the size of the building and that's why we are over.
Okay.
Is there anyone that wanted to speak on the application? Hearing, no one? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Yeah, it looks, it looked perfectly, you know, good, and I can see where there was a misunderstanding on where you start, where you measure from.
Yeah.
I thought at first when I was out there, we were talking about the, the overhang of the roof, but no, there's an actual hole under deck.
In the back.
Yeah, in the backyard.
Yeah.
That he went back from there rather than coming from out from front of it. So, but this is why we asked for the surveys.
Yes.
Now we know.
Now we know.
We should have done it. But that's it, you're done now. You have to do this again.
No one has any further questions? I'll just make a motion that we approve this, I guess that we can make this a modification to the current variance, to the current variance?
No, this has to be a new one. It's a different number.
Okay. So let's, let's grant a variance, a new variance then to cover, to deal with the increased numbers of building coverage. And as stated, doing so is not going to create a change in the character of the neighborhood. There's not going to be a physical or environmental change. It's not really substantial. It was just a misme, a measurement, miscalculation. But now with the, with the as-built survey, it's, it's now, we know, they know where everything is exactly. And as, as was stated, the, the generator that's currently there that we gave the previous variance for fits nicely where it's supposed to fit. This is not a, a self-created hardship. They're just trying to do the right thing in terms of bringing it up to the current, to the current dimensions. And there's nothing else you have to do. Everything's in place, so there's no, there's no need for.
So you got to go through the factors still? So the benefits offered the applicant cannot be achieved by another means feasible.
That's the only other one.
Here it's a correction. Yep. The variance itself is, is not substantial.
Yep, got that one.
There was a error here, right?
We did that.
And the other thing, two things, though, was that I would ask that with this resolution, we have, we have the other Resolution 10-24 rendered null and void, as this is intended to supersede that variance on site.
Oh, okay.
It's not an amendment to it, so otherwise, it would stand in the record. So we want to, we want to render Resolution 10-24 null and void, and going forward, the pertinent resolution will be the one that's issued in conjunction with this particular approval, provided it is approved, in fact.
It's a good idea.
Yep.
Based on the survey of February 5th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Can you, Rob Johnson? Just going to get a second?
Second.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Mr. McCallus?
Yes. Got it.
You want to, you can come collect your surveys too, so you can do some.
We did all the permitting and got all those things, are those?
You're all good now?
Those are all good?
You're all good. Everything's, we'll get, close out your generate permit. Good to go.
I think you can gather, I think the lawsuit, provide your copies.
Yeah, we'll check and make sure that there's no electrical outstanding or anything like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if there's anything, we'll let you know, but otherwise, it's just going to close down. You'll get a CC on it. Okay? Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yes, cute.
Latchman Singh Family Trust, 92 Stanwood Road, Bedford, Section Block &amp; Lot. I didn't have it listed on my agenda. No, I don't have it here. I didn't type it in here. Hang on. 74.6-1-7.17, and that's in the Residential Quarter Acre Zoning District. The applicant is seeking a variance to permit the construction of a retaining wall, which results in 10 feet, 7 inches at its highest and results in a rear yard setback of 38.5 feet, where 40 feet is required for a fence greater than six feet in height in the Residential Quarter Acre Zoning District, Article 5, Section 125-15, 1B.
Which one are we, are you doing, did you just move to 92 Stanwood?
Yeah.
You bypassed it?
You bypassed the deep wood?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who are you here for?
92 Stanwood.
Okay. Well, let's, let's continue.
I'm sorry, but I spoke too soon.
Let's continue, let's continue, let's continue. We'll continue.
Yeah. Sorry.
So you don't have to say anything at the moment. I went out there, you're clearly about to fall into the next neighbor's house. I mean, it's, it's already tilting. The top's already tilting. I don't know what the bottom is like. It certainly needs to be replaced.
Yeah, that, that wood, you know, a railroad tie wall is.
Could I just ask you your name?
Naciel Fernandez. I'm the engineer record.
Are there any letters in the file? Kim, any responses from neighbors or anything?
No. Just on that one application we have.
The guy below is not even writing help or something?
Are you going to present, just describe your project, please?
Well, yes. So we are.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. You need to breathe.
We have a, the applicant has a retaining wall, a railroad tie retaining wall that, I don't know when it was installed, but it's at a point where it's failing. It's, you know, pretty hazardous condition. And we're looking to replace that with a modular block wall with horizontal reinforcement to eliminate any, you know, possible issues of collapsing in the future as much as possible.
Okay. I have a question, though.
Yes.
Just technically, this is listed as a wall, but this is an application for a fence. So technically, this is correct, that it's a fence when it's, and a wall, all under the same category?
Yes.
Okay.
So because of. Because of the height of the wall.
Yeah.
We need to have a railing or fencing above it to, for fall protection.
So when I was out there, part of the collapsing wall is, kind of stops at the end of the, end of the house, at the corner of the house.
Yes.
And then your drawing here goes further down, closer to the asphalt driveway on this, on the side of the house.
No, they, they both, they both, you know, it should end about the same spot.
Okay. It looked like it went past, I, I, what I saw was at the top of the hill on the side of the house, but this drawing looks like it's coming down towards the driveway, closer to the driveway, further down. What are you saying?
As, as it gets to the driveway in the front.
Yes.
The grades kind of meet.
So it is continuing, but it's just not at that height?
Yes. It ends where the new, where the existing wall fairly ends.
Yes.
That's where the new one's going to start. It's.
The new one's going to start there?
Yeah, it's in the same spot, basically.
Okay. I, my question was, how much, I looked on your drawings, but I didn't see, how much fill are you bringing in? How much soil are you bringing in?
We're not.
You're not bringing in?
We're not bringing in.
So you're going to use everything existing that's on the property then? Okay. And in the, in the rear of the house, the wood deck with the surrounding wall is pre-existing? I didn't go behind the house.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And that's, the wall that we're putting there is just a knee wall. It's replacing the, you know, the same railroad tie wall that was back there, we're just replacing it with a modular block wall.
Now, I see that you are removing a couple of trees, but you're leaving, for the most part, the rest of the trees on the property.
Correct. We're just removing a couple of the smaller ones.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I see where it's necessary, as we discussed, because you, you need to, you'll lose your land, I mean, in a landfill, landslide, so you're trying to really retain all that property in the, in the back of the house. One last question. You have like a temporary construction entrance.
Yeah, we put one, we put one on either side.
Yes.
Because we don't know which way the contractor is going to go in.
Okay, so the one that's on the side of the driveway is going to be, one is going to be removed after the project?
They're both going to be removed.
Oh, okay.
They're just temporary.
Okay, great.
It's just for access to the property and not tracking sediments out of the road.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience or on the Zoom call that wanted to speak on this application? Again, seeing so, one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make it.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
So the only question that I had is, what is the frequency of the, the weep, the PVC weeping holes?
The frequency of the PVC weeping holes?
Yeah.
I don't recall that. I didn't anticipate that question, but I did recall it. I think I have a detail in there on the typically.
We're not just pretty faces up here.
We are pretty and smart.
I don't know.
And handsome.
12, 12 feet on center.
12 feet on center for them?
Mm-hmm. But it is a modular block wall.
Yeah.
So they kind of, it's not sealed. My experience with them is that because they are practically laid dry on top of the other.
Yep.
They do allow for some.
Some, some.
Moisture.
Yeah. I'm just more sensitive. There was just, we had a collapse down in Bedford Hills, so. All right, as long as, as long as, because I don't see where those are denoted on, on the plans.
On the weep hole?
Maybe this is them? No, it's the fence line. I don't see that denoted on the plans. I see the weep holes in terms of the, the engineering of the, the cut that it has.
On the detail.
On the section. Yeah. Yeah, but it doesn't show the frequency of it. So I just would make note, you know, whenever they go and they do this, that that is whatever is conforming with, with the guidelines, that there's appropriate distancing or frequency of those. The frequency? I see, see it in the section, but I don't see the, where it makes note of the range.
Yeah, that's not, that's not something that I, I personally typically put in on plans.
Yep.
As they are building it.
Okay, yeah. But that's okay. I just have a sensitivity to it because I've seen them. Okay.
So really, it's a combination, they're just like saying, of the drainage being properly installed.
Correct.
But also, you don't pin it into the, you don't pin it in in any way. It's stacked.
The blocks, the blocks?
No, the block, the blocks are going to get a geotext mesh behind it, which is what, you know, provides the support to prevent the ladder moving on the wall.
Yeah, we had one other project not too long ago where we had a steep slope, a house down the lower end, and they also had to have that retaining wall installed, so. Great.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. The Town of Bedford zoning board, in reviewing an application for 92 Stanwood Road, Bedford, seeking a variance to permit the construction of a retaining wall, which is resulting in 10.7 feet at its highest and a rear yard setback, as stated in their application. The board has considered the need for this installation and recognized that the property is, needs this protection for the loss of the land and also to stabilize the, the steep slope that essentially is on both sides of the property and for the safety aspect and also for the retention of the, of the soil on the property. As far as a variance, the board found the benefit to the applicant by granting the variance outweighs any alleged detriment to the community and determined the following. We have also no comments from any neighbors to have any problems with this project. The benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by another means feasible to the applicant, and there will be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the nearby properties. The variance requested is substantial but necessary for the safety and security of the, of the property itself. The variance requested will not result in adverse physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or community, and the alleged difficulty is not self-created, it is, it is created, however, it, the situation itself demands some resolution. That's only one of the factors that we consider as a board in making the decision, and this is, aspect is not the determination. Approval of the proposed variance will be subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall use their best efforts to ensure that a building permit is issued within one year of the board's approval of this variance, and then diligently pursue such construction to completion. The applicant shall submit a certified as-built survey. Yes. Including building and impervious coverage calculations to the building department prior to the issuance of their certificate of occupancy. And the variance is granted in accordance with the plans that were submitted to the board, which are dated.
The last revision date is 2/13/2025.
September?
Sorry, I had September on the plans. You have.
I was given the last submission date.
Revision date is on the other side.
What is the revision date on your plan?
Yes, 2/13/25.
2/13/25.
Thank you.
Also, have you put in any landscaping following, following the conclusion of the wall?
We don't anticipate, also the growth there is going to come back.
Oh, okay.
The trees, the mature trees that are there are going to remain, so it's anticipated that that's going to naturally fill back.
Okay, thank you.
We also need, though, to include, make sure that we have the engineer's certification with regard to the retaining wall as one of the conditions.
In addition to the previous comments, we need an engineer's certification as to the...
As required by the building department.
As required by the building department as to the installation.
Okay.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Howard seconds it.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Mr. McCallus?
Yes, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have some, if you want to pick up the surveys.
Here's your surveys. If you take them, you won't need them. If you don't take them, you'll need them tomorrow.
Sorry, I wrote all over your plan.
Those two right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize for going out of order here.
Now we're going back.
We're going to Kevin Gensel, 75 Deepwood Road, Bedford, Section Block and Lot 74 dot 5.
Did you call the roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, I did, yeah, I did.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah. I said, yes, okay. I don't even know what I'm doing, so...
Okay, maybe we are just pretty faces up here.
Section Block and Lot 74 dot 5 dash 1 dash 7 dot 17, Residential Four Acres Zoning District. The applicant is seeking a variance to permit the construction of a swimming pool on a legal non-conforming lot, where the lot size is 138,650 square feet or 3.18 acres, where a lot size of four acres is required in the Residential Four Acres Zoning District, and where the building coverage results in 4.04%, where the existing coverage is 3.36% and where 3% is a maximum building coverage permitted, and where the impervious surface coverage results in 10.90%, where the existing impervious surface coverage is 9.85%, and where a maximum of 8% impervious surface coverage is permitted in the R4A zoning district, Article 3, Section 125 dash 11D, and Article 5, Section 125 dash 50.
Good evening, who's speaking on this application?
My name is Dan Sherman, testing, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, because I have to use these, I don't have a microphone or a speaker in my, my computer. So Dan Sherman, I'm the landscape architect for the Getzels, and they are proposing a modest-sized pool in an already cleared backyard right behind their house. I don't know if the board went to the site.
We did.
I was gonna make a, you'll see that it's all, a lot of beautiful woods, which they're keeping, there are no trees to be removed, and there's a lawn right behind the patio where they propose to put this pool, and we are a non-conforming lot, it's three acres. The zoning is two acres and four acres, and we're halfway in between, and there is no three-acre zone, but just for interest, I thought that I would see what if there was, where we would be. So I divided halfway between the two and the four, and if, I mean, if you bear with me for this, but the numbers are complex in a way, but if it were three acre, we'd be allowed to cover 4.5 with buildings, where we're requesting 4.0. And with the impervious, halfway between the two and four acres would fall at 11%, and we're at 10.9. So we're sort of right on target, if there were such a thing as a three-acre zone. So we're asking for that to be considered. And again, to consider there are no trees to be removed or no additional clearing of their lovely woodland lot, and it far exceeds the setbacks, side yard, rear yard. There's no new building, except the pool, which does constitute a structure, but they removed, they already removed the treehouse.
There's a pool that's being removed?
There's a, yeah, there's an old, I don't know if it was non-conforming or not, but there was like a free-form, sort of a pool with a spa,
Yeah.
before I was brought on the project. That, I think, has already, if not in the process, of being removed, and we're adding shrubbery and planting flowers in that area.
Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this application?
Yeah, it's Bob Reader here, if you could hear me.
Yeah.
I'm the owner of the property next door, please, 85 Deepwood, and also, we lived for a decade and a half at 101 Deepwood, so I'm extremely familiar with the land here and what, and what it involves, and what it looks like. We want to make several points on this. First of all, this is not a flat piece of land. It is non-conforming, it's non-conforming, just like 101 is and 85 are, because there's a, there's a conservation easement down at the bottom that was put in, like horses go. That is a very, very hilly area. There is not a lot of flat land that they own that's really usable, so we're not talking about a situation where they have three flat acres and that it's easy for the land to take this additional building. As a matter of fact, their driveway, their driveway begins on an easement from my property, 85. They don't even have ingress because of the hilly nature of this. They don't, they don't even have ingress and egress on their own land, they're relying upon our easement, basically to get in and out, which obviously is, is fine, they have the easement, but it just goes to show that this land is not flat land where it can really hold a pool. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, when they backflush this pool or rains, that water's going to go down the hill, and by the way, the hill goes down to my property as well, right down, my property's right there, adjacent, obviously. And there's nothing in here that I could see that says they have to put up a retaining wall to keep that water out from going down the hill. I mean, I don't know if any of the neighbors complained who are down below them, but that water's going to run right down the hill into the neighbors and into my property as well, and obviously, if you wanted to approve this, we would want a retaining wall put up, and one that would hold any water that happens when they do a backflow, or we get one of these rainstorms that seem like they happen all the time anymore that causes the pool over the flow. There's also a sidewalk, it looks like, and I'm not an expert on these plans, just a layman, it looks like they're putting in a sidewalk that runs along the property line, and I wanted to make sure that that was not close to the property line, whatever that, whatever that is, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't close. I also wanted to make sure that there was some protection to make sure that if somebody was on our land, that they wouldn't just, you know, a pool is an attractive nuisance, as you know, and what we certainly don't want is anybody to be on our land and go over towards their land. Obviously, we're just a building lot at this point, we're not, we don't have a house, obviously, we can build a house if we want, we have the same non-conforming variance that others do here, but we object to this. We strenuously object to it, because we don't think the three acres in its current state, again, if this was flat land, I wouldn't be on this call, I would just say, yeah, it's flat land, they're gonna put in a pool, it's fine. This is a hill they're on, that house is sited on a hill. So we object to this.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually, my wife just said it's on a ledge, actually. It's worth, it's not, it's on a ledge.
Excuse me, sir, are you the property that's vacant with the black fence?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's just above it, yeah.
To the side.
Yeah.
Would you mind responding?
And part of our property, they, if you look at the driveway, that driveway where it begins is actually on our property, they have an easement for that. They needed to do, to get easement from us to get the driveway legal to go up to the house.
Perhaps your representative would respond to the questions?
Sure, sure, I didn't, I didn't want to until I was... Can I share my site plan and explain?
Yes.
The response to do that?
You need to speak up when you talk, though.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Send requests, I think the sharing needs to be turned on?
Yes, Ben. Yeah.
Al, while he pulls that up, it's with regard to the pool permit and design and whatnot, is there anything that's required? I know that we have, there is a requirement by New York State law that there be a fence put around the pool, and that's shown on the plans.
Yes.
But is there anything that's laid out to deal with an overflow from the pool?
That's gonna be in a stormwater, and just to let you know, in the drainage that they have to provide, and they are, they are going over 5,000 square feet, they're at 8,500 square feet of area disturbance, so they will need a full-blown permit from, through our town engineer.
Okay.
Who will also have to do inspections, they'll have to provide them all the CULT tech system, also, I believe this is, looks like it's gonna be a steep slope, so it's gonna have to go before the planning board.
Okay. Bob, as you walk us through those plans, can you point out in particular where the fence is and where the drainage is intended to be?
Dan, you mean me?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a fence proposed immediately around the pool.
Can you enlarge, sorry, can you enlarge your survey a bit, so that it's clearer to? Thank you.
There, I think that's pretty good. So there are some old stone retaining walls, and this is a yard that's really flat, it just, you can see the contours, if you see my, to the left of the pool, it droops off a bit. We certainly could propose, if we get permission for the pool, another retaining wall with gravel behind it to hold water back, but it's in, the flag patio is flat, and so the pool is right behind that, it's not a slope there, that was filled years ago. So the pool's proposed in the flat yard that does droop a little bit off to the side, but not more than a foot or two. Then it's proposed to be completely fenced, again, it's in a cleared space, the only flat place on the property. I don't know of any sidewalk, that's existing stone stair, but there's no proposed sidewalk, just a small patio. The retaining wall, when the engineer does a stormwater plan, the retaining wall can be made to detain any water running, but there's a septic field that's grass, and the rest is pretty thick wood, so it's hard to imagine any water would make its way through the woods after it's detained in the gravel behind the retaining wall. So, that's not really a steep slope area, although there are steep slopes on the property, and we'll do whatever is required to conform with the permitting procedure.
And excuse me, between the pool area and the neighbor who is objecting, there's a rock ledge, so it does not fall directly off of the pool onto the neighbor's property? There's a rock ledge in between?
Is this up on the right of my plan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's uphill, the water from that property would come our way, nothing could go up.
Thank you.
And then on the left, there are several stone retaining walls on the left.
There are old stone walls there.
Yeah, so in a sense, the ledge, the flat ledge is surrounded by some barriers in order to runoff, and to your knowledge, has there been any flood, any water prior to this moving onto another adjoining property?
No, because the downhill side is so far away, 180, 200 feet down, but it would be a nice idea to, where I have this purple line, it was my limited disturbance, to introduce a, maybe a three-foot stone wall, to keep the pool area flatter, so that any water could, you know, just go into the grass or into the gravel behind the wall. As far as where the pool gets discharged to, usually, most towns are supposed to go into a septic, so that the chlorine doesn't go into the ground or out onto the street, so they put it into the septic field.
And I think, I think the neighbor was looking at what is labeled as the stone retaining wall, closer to their property line, as they, they read it as being potentially walkway, but if you read that, that halfed area...
Oh, yeah, that's a little garden wall, a stone wall. Again, the water goes, the hill goes up, so the water would come from that property down, not to the other.
Is that, is that a chlorine pool or a salt water?
It's a salt water.
Oh, okay, so there will not be any chlorine.
Well, the salt actually turns to chlorine, chemically, but it's clean, it's, that chlorine is a salt, it's just not chlorine that's put in.
Yeah.
The salt generator cleans the pool by sort of turning it to a salt type of chlorine, but it's not salty, not chloriny, it's a thirtieth as salty as the ocean.
Just to correct one thing now, this is not gonna be discharged into a septic system, it's too much water to go into it, you'll fill, you'll fill the tank and the fields up, so this will have to go into, into a drain, its own stormwater, which will be handled with the town engineer.
A CULT type system?
Yes.
In towns like Scarsdale, they wanted to go into the septic thing, which is the sewer, but yeah, I'm sure on a property with a septic field, I guess you would... Thank you.
No worries.
Now I know.
There is also a, we received correspondence from Wayne Cohen at 25 Deepwood, who's in support of the variance for the pool. Let's make that a part of the record.
And 25 Deepwood?
Yeah, 25 Deepwood.
And 96 Deepwood? 96 and 25?
Oh, I didn't see 96, okay. We have 96 Deepwood as well.
Yes, sir.
I have, I have a plan that shows the whole property, I want to see the bigger picture.
Let's see the whole property, yeah.
But I'm not labeling, I didn't label what was around it, but you can see how far down the slope it is from any activity with this pool.
Right, it's a flat bridge.
It's all wood.
And, and Bob, as I understand it, your lot is the tax lot 7.16, 16, when you go back to the other plan, Dan, it shows those tax lot numbers, yeah.
I'll go and close you out.
Correct.
I have no idea what the number is, I'm 85, which is on the right of the plan, sorry, I don't...
Yeah.
I don't know what number is, 85 is adjacent to it, 85 is where, if you go down where the driveway's at, you'll see they have the easement coming.
Yes, yes, okay, so your, that tax lot, 7.6 and Lot 16, 7.6 acres really.
7.16, Lot 16.
And then Lot 16.
And here's where he's, he's pointing out that the driveway...
If this is the property line...
Yes, then you can see the easement.
Yep.
Yep, and it says easement for egress and ingress there.
It is.
So I just want to make sure.
Any other questions from anybody in the audience or any discussion? Yes?
Dan, could I ask you?
Yeah.
I can't see, maybe I'm blind, where is the actual septic fields and tank?
The fields are here, where the lawn has been made flat.
Okay.
So I guess, I don't, this, this tank must be somewhere, is it on the survey? I don't know, but I think it's somewhere between the house and the field.
Okay, well, we'll have to see if the tank is a minimum like 20 feet from the pool, and the septic fields have to be a minimum, I believe, of 35.
Yeah, I think we are.
I think you got that, but I, I will want to see the, the septic tank on the plan.
Absolutely.
And also, just to let you know, you're fine to do the design as far as when it comes to the architectural side of it, but anything structural, such as a pool, that has to be from either an architect or an engineer. All right?
Yes, the pool company is West Fair, and they...
Oh, they got them, that's fine.
Yeah, they have an engineer for that. I don't see the, the tank, but we can locate it.
Great, thank you.
Have you tested, will there be any blasting needed here?
No, because the, the shallow end is on the right, deep end's on the left, and that's all, years ago, was filled.
Okay.
So we're gonna do a cross-section and make sure when we excavate, we get the virgin ground and then bank it up with gravel or any footing that the engineer designs, so that it's on virgin ground, but it's in this area of fill.
Okay.
So it won't be any rock.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any more discussion?
She's got the septic field, we have... I think from our conversation, the concern about water coming onto the adjoining property on the right side, due to that steep slope, is pretty much not, not gonna be a problem. I believe the engineer and the landscape agree on that, and it appears that that's the case, since the home on the right is on top of a, of a slope, and this is below, so I'm not sure that's happening. I think I heard that most of the concerns were, were responded to, unless there's something I've missed, but in general, I did observe the property, and they really have no impact, and two people, other neighbors are supportive of this application. It's all condensed on the one property, and it's surrounded by wooded area, you can't even, I couldn't even see homes in the surrounding area, so I think with the septic system protected and the system that's being installed for the pool to absorb any runoff, it seems very acceptable for the property.
Can I just turn that into a motion?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Well, and the other point the landscape architect made was the proportionality here. Our regulations have a certain proportion of coverage requirements and impervious, and here, when you look at those, if you were to take the ratios, it's in line with it if you were to allow three-acre zoning, that was kind of the point, it's, it's conceptually aligned, so this is an undersized, in regard to the four-acre, but in excess of two, the town doesn't have three-acre zoning, but if you were to look at that, this would be essentially in line with that, so if it was a conforming lot, it would not be an issue if, you know, if it was a three-acre lot, or allowed for three, sorry, if there was allowance for three-acre zoning, theoretically, it'd be in conformance with what the code would provide, so I think that's an interesting...
It's sort of like having a little bit of an extra gift on one side, but a little more restrictions because of that, so...
Correct. And here, you know, when you look at it, too, that where you go downhill, there's already retaining walls in place there, and Dan, Dan, I had a question for you with regard to where you note the purple there as adding an additional retaining wall, is that something the client would be interested in doing, or...
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I think, I think in particular with the concerns about overflow from the pool, but the client having a willingness to add a retaining wall along that, I guess it's the westerly slope that's going downhill, in line with the, essentially where he marks the outer disturbance area, so that you could have an overflow area, if the pool itself were to overflow, it would essentially be captured in that grass area and have an opportunity essentially seep through the ground as opposed to flowing over it and downhill. So I think that that's a fair remark. And with regard to the uphill neighbor, I understand, you know, there's always concerns when there's disturbance on a neighboring lot here, but I think the concerns regarding water flow, given the site topography, for him as a neighbor are less of a concern because he's actually uphill and the water won't flow in that direction, and the applicant's willing to take steps to further help prevent any overflow and downhill flow of water. And as we've heard from the building inspector, the pool itself, that water that's in there will ultimately have to be handled by its own septic system. So any of those issues that are raised are being aptly addressed essentially through the, to the approval process.
Sounds good to me.
That sounds like.
Also another motion.
I would move to approve the application as noticed. Benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by another means feasible to the applicant. There will be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I believe that that's demonstrated by the plans and the location of the pool itself, as well as putting letters and the conversation around the neighbor's concerns, having demonstrated that many of them are, are being addressed by the applicant in the pool design. The variance itself could be deemed substantial, I would argue that in this case, it's not significant. The variance resulted will not result in any adverse physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or community. In fact, the location in which the pool is being placed does not require the removal of any significant trees or landscaping and is being done in an area that already been, had been previously disturbed, and so it's, it's not creating any new disturbance essentially on the site as a whole. And the old pool that's there will be removed and filled back in as appropriate and landscaped appropriately.
It's, it's worth noting, excuse me, that, that old, the old hot tub are closer to the.
To the neighbor, to the one neighbor.
To the neighbor, exactly, it's coming more closer to the house.
So, and, and this pool now will conform, in fact, with all setbacks, more than conform with all setback requirements. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but that's not the only one of the factors to be considered by the board in making its decision and is not determinative. Approval of the proposed variance is subject to the following conditions. The applicant will use their best efforts to ensure the building permit and pool, is it a building permit and pool permit or just a pool permit?
It's a building permit.
A building permit is issued within one year of the board's approval of the variance and then diligently pursued construction. The applicant shall submit a certified as-built survey, including building and impervious coverage calculations, to the building department prior to the issuance of specific occupancy. The applicant shall also secure all other required approvals required for the installation of the pool, including but not limited to the health department, the town of Bedford Engineering Department, right, they'll be looking at that?
Yeah.
Did you say the planning department for steep slopes?
As long as there's no wetlands, so they'll, they'll take a look at wetlands, steep slopes.
Steep slopes, okay.
And also storm drainage.
Okay, so the applicant needs to secure all other approvals required in order for the variance essentially take effect. The variance is granted in accordance with the plans dated February 19th, 2025, drawing L2. What else? Oh, and the applicant make note, the applicant had indicated that they would add a retaining wall to that westerly area, disturbance area, disturbance area marked on, with a purple line, so there'll be a small retaining wall there to help capture the water.
Nope, sounds good. Second. No, second, yep.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Mr. McCallus?
Yes, so, Dan, you got it?
Dan, before you walk in, can you please just make a note to put that, that retaining wall on there for us?
Mm-hmm, and then we'll connect with the, the stormwater engineer and start that process.
So they have, they have a year then to, to complete again?
Correct.
And if this, if the area of work is, doesn't involve a steep slope, we might not have to go to plan, because we're not disturbing anything beyond that purple line.
Well, our, our planning department's going to look at it regardless, and then they'll determine if it needs to go to the planning board.
I see.
But you, you're over the disturbance, so you will need to show something to the town engineer, so you, you're already starting to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you all, very cultural group.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Colleen, and I'm not going to get this right.
Selena.
To Selena?
Selena.
Selena.
There was an S missing up there.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that helps or not.
Selena. 77 Buckston Road, Bedford Hills, section block and lot 60 dot 19 dash 1 dash 2, residential four acre zoning district. The applicant is seeking a variance to permit the construction of a shed dormer to a legal pre-existing garage, which creates an increase in the height of a dimensionally legal, pre-existing non-conforming structure that resulted in a side yard setback of 46.56 feet, and where the dormer results in a side yard setback of 47.5 feet, where 50 feet is required in the residential four acre zoning district, Article 5, Section 125 dash 50.
Good evening. Good evening, Victor Solari, Goodie's Architects. The owners are here to, to see the process at work.
Oh, are you impressed?
I haven't been here a while, it's good to see that, that the room is empty, everybody zooming in.
This has been a speedy night, let me just tell you. We don't want to jinx it here.
So this application is for a side yard variance where the existing garage extends into the side yard setback, and we're proposing to install, build a shed dormer on top of the garage to modify the already existing kind of rec room up above the garage, there's very low headroom, and this will allow to, the space to be used more efficiently. And so we push the, the dormer edges slightly away from the, from the corner of the garage, but it still requires the variance because it's still less than 50 feet to the property line.
An increase in height?
It's increasing the height, but the footprint.
Because otherwise, they're only going in this much.
Yeah, we've seen, we've seen these before, this happens.
I'm, I'm sure you have.
Yeah.
It happens every day. So if you're interested in the elevations or the, I don't know whether you, the board has been able to, to visit the site, but it's actually, the side yard is, the access to the garage is two-car garage door with a parking and turnaround area that extends into the side yard, and it's a steep hill up, up, up the hill, so, and there's no proper, no, no house in vicinity that you actually see this house or this property, so it doesn't have any visual impact on anybody, any of the neighbors.
It faces a rock ledge.
Faces a rock ledge, yes.
Another ledge. The stairway to access is from with interior, I didn't go into the.
Yes, it's, it's an existing stair that goes up from the, from the kitchen area or, or breakfast area, straight up to.
From, from the house itself?
From the house itself.
Oh, from the house.
From the house itself.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's an interior staircase.
Okay.
Kind of in the middle of, of the garage, we're from the back wall, you go, you go So here, actually, you can see the, the two-car garage coming in, and this is a staircase from the, from the existing area, and continues up to the second floor, and this dark liched area is the area of the dormer.
And, and it has skylights up there now, right?
It has some skylights now.
So it's going, it is a rec room and it's going to have a, you want to put a bathroom in with a sink and.
That exists too, that, that, that is existing.
Oh, it's existing?
There's a, there's a full bathroom up there.
I don't see anybody here that wants to speak on this application. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. Any other questions?
No.
No, they're making a question.
I mean, are, are they limited to just, like, in other words, they can't make a bedroom, or they, it stays with the one bath, or is it, can it be just a rec room?
Yeah, stays with, I mean, they're not changing the bath, they've just got the one bath. Yeah, just be a rec room. How do you want to do, do, do a motion on, yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. In particular, the board found that the benefit to the applicant by granting the variance outweighs any alleged detriment to the community, and determined the following. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by another means feasible to the applicant, and there will be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the nearby properties. And the variance requested is not substantial, and the variance requested will not result in any adverse physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or community. And the alleged difficulty, while is self-created, but that is not only one of the factors to be considered by the board in making its decision and is not determinative. Approval of the proposed variance would be subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall use their best efforts to ensure that a building permit is issued within one year of the board's approval of this variance, and then diligently pursue such construction to completion. The applicant shall submit a certified as-built survey, including building and impervious coverage calculations, to the building department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and the variance is granted in accordance with the plans submitted to the board dated.
Well, it's revised for the ZBA 227-25. 225-25. 227. You have 227?
Plan A, A1 and A2 are 227-25.
Okay, I have.
S1 is 225, exactly.
Okay, the three of them, and submitted to the board on March, looks like March 5th or 6th, 2025.
Can I just make one, one question slash comment here?
Sure, please.
The, the work that's going on, is it, it's just over on that second floor, essentially, over the existing footprint? So in the, the plans that they submitted here, they actually have, it's, you have this signed and sealed set of plans that has the coverage and impervious on it. There's no changes normally require it because there are changes to the footprint, even when we could have a three-dimensional. Here, the three-dimensional variance is solely to the second floor, that's not going to require any construction or change, anything that was previously certified. So I don't see the point in this case of requiring to go and get another certified survey, they're going to submit the same exact drawing to us again, because there's no footprint changes or groundwork to happen, it's simply a modification to that second story.
Yep. Al, will they need that for the, for the CBO?
That's up to the board, I mean, they, if we have the survey that shows the 47.5, we can measure off of that to see if they cut the one foot back.
Right.
You know, so we don't need any.
No, I, I would say this, if, when you're done with construction, someone could take that singular measurement to confirm that it matches the plan and submit a letter to the board that it's in conformance, okay? And if not, then what's going to happen is the same process that we would have with a certified survey, I'd have to return and get the variance essentially to match it. But in this way, because I, they're not touching.
I will amend my application to include the language.
Mr. Griffin, this shows, that's where you got this from.
I just.
46.56, there you go, so, yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to have him certify it also.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's, that's okay, because as long, because we do have a setback already in place that shows that, and they're not going past it, they're, they're going within the house.
Right, and if it was a situation where we were doing new construction or a build from the floor up into that space, I would say it would make sense because I will check, but I don't, this is one of those rare, rare instances.
Where it's not necessary.
You must be very impressed with us at this point by saving you all that trouble.
Wait, she's got, we need to have a roll call here.
Wait, who's second? Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes, Mr. McCallus.
Yes, you've got it.
Thank you very much.
Take your plans, your extra plans?
Thank you.
No, not that.
You're going to want to, at some point.
No, you almost gave him a.
You're, you're not well, just go home.
I am well, I don't know why, I don't, I mean, it must be allergic to you.
No, I have a feeling you're getting something, and I'm, I have a feeling I'm getting something right after that.
Is there any, but, any discussion anybody wanted to have before we adjourn the meeting?
No.
Can I have a motion adjourned until, what are we, next day is May?
May 1st, I think.
Is it May 1st?